Okay, it's ten o'clock, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call, Smiley.
Here.
Him.
Here.
And Murphy, here. Okay, number four, approval of payroll warrants and claims.
Are we going to approve those?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Number five, approval of the minutes of last meeting, February tenth, two thousand and twenty.
Go through.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number six, discussion possible action regarding following road crossing permits with O G N E. Who is that is?
That's me.
Oh, okay.
Fourteen more thousand. I'm not sure exactly what it's uh...
Thirty-two, twenty-eight, fourteen, go on.
Is it buried, or is it just an overhead?
No. I'm going to approve that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ten out there.
Isn't the building one right east of Salem?
I really just wanted to know things that picked them back up in Oklahoma on the rim count. Just uh, they talk like the same deals.
This one east of Salem, wanting to build a pad, put all the stuff on it, then come in and haul it all off. They called me the other day, getting ready to haul it all back on the trip.
Got the legal order.
Is it right there by the, where you turn off to go to campus?
Yeah.
It's right there.
On, 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 yeah. Okay, discussion possible action regarding the use of the courthouse lawn and parking lot for the Mid-Central Big Cruise and Car Show.
Hello. How are y'all?
Good, how are you?
Great. Uh, I'm Joe Phillips, and um, I'm here to ask permission to use the, the parking area back here to the east and the grounds uh, for our twentieth annual Mid-Central Big Cruise and Car Show. We really have, as far as what we're gonna use, really no changes. We've got a lot of changes going on.
Just like it has.
Yeah, pretty much.
Hey, always Cindy Shady was kind of like, "Find it."
Pretty much, yes sir. I'll tell you what, I hope, well, I shouldn't say, but this might be my last one. Not, not that I'm disgruntled, but I've been doing it for five years, and somebody, somebody else has turned, I think.
Step up and get out.
Right.
I'm good with it.
It's September eighteenth, nineteenth, twenty. So, you're here.
Only a time.
So, I'm all in favor of it, I think it's a really good deal.
Awesome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Tea off.
Okay, number eight, discussion possible action regarding the Escatado Arts Festival. Charlie, you're at it.
Thank you. I'm Charlie Parker. Happy to be at this table I had in school, so. Do I have to do this?
Of course, you're good.
I know. It's startling, isn't it? But yes, I want to ask permission, so I can go ahead and use the courthouse square on June sixth, fifth, first, and on the March festival, fifth, first.
And the law, so.
And the lobby of the courthouse, that's right. And we all have security.
Everything just like it has been passed, though. Got a motion board?
Yep.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it very much.
Okay, number nine, discussion possible action regarding our reunion twenty-twenty. I'll go bug. I don't know, the E D, E D U is for education, or?
Well, I, I do some abbreviations, because it's such a long name.
Okay.
I'm Elizabeth Ritchie with the Alba Goldberg Education Foundation, A G E F, and we are sponsoring the reunion twenty-twenty.
I don't think I'm old enough for that.
Well, I'll just tell ya, I grew up in Elka City, and my class had great reunions every five years, until we were old enough for the all-school reunion, which they have every three years. And then my parents stopped showing up.
Aww.
So, but, Alba has not had an all-school reunion since two thousand. And as far as I know, that was the first one.
I think so.
That's the first one I remember.
Yes, and so.
And it was fun.
It was lots of fun.
This, this is what this is coming.
Yes, um, and we do have a steering committee, and once this event is over, and it's time to do our wrap-up meeting, they will be charged with determining a sooner rotation rather than every twenty years. Um, so, that's in the works down the road. But I'm also requesting permission for views of courthouse lawn for Saturday, July fourth. The reunion is July third to the fifth. Um, we were proposing a parade Saturday morning, and um, also lunch on the square afterward. Food trucks, everybody's using the same food trucks that the Big Cruise and Car Show uses. Um, and we began with the local food trucks. And um, then after lunch, probably around eleven-thirty, people will be doing town tours, uh, drawing on school buildings, and etc. like that. We would probably need part of the, for permission to come in on the afternoon, early evening hours of the third, to put up tables and chairs, where classes could come eat together, and things like that.
Sounds great to me. I, I'm good with the motion. Second, David.
I'll second. I'm good with it.
Thank you, hope to see.
I'm not a gold bug, though.
You can come, that's all right.
I'm a warrior.
Yes, yes, well, I hope to see you all down there.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Go Larry, aye.
I sure will. Good to meet you, Angie.
I figured they would do an alumni, more quicker than that around here, but.
Well, they have.
They help us, like, every five years, they give us different class.
Well, we have a class review, so. But this is a whole school.
But every five years, the whole school comes.
Oh, okay.
That's not.
Every five years, doing open.
Yeah.
Alumni, you know, that's sometimes a good thing.
All right.
Oh, where is she with this?
Okay, how about we skip over ten, go to eleven, and oh, you get a hold of Jennifer.
Okay.
And we'll, woman, now, eleven, discussion possible action regarding the Free Frere Fair Board Requisition.
Do we have any bids? All right, thanks. Okay, so they added uh...
You got some?
They added Brooke Meyer.
Meyer, okay.
And so it's Kevin and Brooke now. That way he'll have, it'll be easier for him to find someone when he gets up.
Oh, here it is. Okay. All right, I'll make a motion we approve this.
We're making, what, we're making these people requisitioning officers?
Yes, Brooke Meyer and Kevin Pendleton.
And Kevin has been, but um...
Kevin's already on the list, just add.
Add Brooke, yeah.
Staff, that is a...
I'll second that, if that was.
All in favor?
Aye.
Morning, Jennifer. Ready to get in.
That's what I thought, I thought you said.
Joan, second.
You didn't have a pile of them, huh?
No, I just had one.
Okay, number ten, discussion possible action regarding the nineteen ninety-four International Truck Bid, F Y nineteen, twenty, thirteen, for sale.
I just got one. And it's from Gary Perks, for three forty-five, sixty-seven.
Three hundred and forty-five dollars. See how he's up there?
Everything suits you? I'm gonna make a motion we accept that.
I'll second it. I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And it's from Mickey?
From Gary Perks, third.
Stamp that one aside. I mean, you can do your thing, I just can't look at it anymore.
No, I got it.
Hope he has good luck with his dollars. I feel like he had thirty minutes to get it all along.
Okay, number twelve, discussion possible action regarding the court clerk's records, management, and preservation monthly report. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, this wasn't ready when we did our other monthly report, so.
Oh, okay. It's just a monthly report?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. There's a lot of words, verbs there for that.
There is.
But it's normally just court clerk.
I'll make a motion we approve that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, she has two reports now, so.
Oh, okay.
I thought, well, this way we'd know for sure which one it was.
There we go. A bunch of zeros, huh?
That's why the number matters.
I could probably keep those books, if nothing else.
Yeah.
Okay, thirteen, discussion possible action regarding surplus and trade of a same-copier for D two, ID number D two one three dash seventeen. Okay, this is for my shit, and she just updating that. It, it's better, but we traded, evidently traded in the interim, or I thought we were doing swap. That's a hot.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, the, this swap. So, essentially, we're surplusing it to trade it in. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? You okay with that, John?
Yep, aye. They're using three brasses.
Okay, number fourteen, discussion possible action regarding a surplus and junk a computer ID number E two five oh dash one one for O S U Office.
A loo.
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded that?
I did.
You did?
Is there two pages to sign, or?
No.
Oh.
The other page just has.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, number fifteen, discussion possible action regarding a surplus and junk a repeater tower ID number D six oh two dash one three seven, and five radios, ID number six oh two one five three, D six oh two one six five, D six oh two one eight one, D six oh two one eight seven, and D six oh two dash two oh two for D three.
What that is, uh, it's not actually a tower, it's the, it's a repeater in the equipment, uh, the antenna that goes up on the tower.
Oh, I bet it is.
It's like the wires that come down.
Okay.
And then it basically.
It was one on that ODOT tower.
Yeah, they took the old tower down.
Okay.
Kept the antenna, but the wire, all that stuff, they're gonna put new up on this other tower, Big Wednesday will probably be up.
It wasn't our tower, so they're not really jumping or, or surplusing the tower.
No.
Okay, that's how they had it in there.
Okay.
For some reason, had it in the um, inventory, they called it repeater tower.
And I asked him, and he said, "Well, it's really just the antenna" that goes on the tower.
Okay.
So, that's a motion.
That's a motion, and, and the radios are, are uh, junk, trash.
They can't be.
Yeah, they're out of date, all the ones can't be found. But we will use the equipment on the repeater tower on the new. The new repeater, they're just up that new wire.
Yeah.
We'll use our old repeater and the antenna, and they'll just put new wire, so.
All right, now, the motion, Dave, second it, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion possible action regarding the right-of-way entrance application. Okay, this uh, have you changed some of the things you wanted to change?
I'd like to state that before we, you know, the, the money, and maybe the pipe have given us some leeway, if it, if it don't need a pipe, you know, it's, there's wordage in there, it says, "Put a pipe, no matter what." There's gonna be places that don't need pipe. I'd like some wordage in there where we could kinda overrule that.
Okay, well, how about, how about you decide what you want in there, and we get it to like you want it, before we approve it next week? I mean, or, or you do it right now?
Let's do it right now, then. I wanna change, but it's, if we do it right now, we're gonna do a thousand? I'd rather do the five hundred.
Okay.
I mean, that's my thing.
That's fine, I mean, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred instead of a thousand dollars?
It just, can you not make the verbiage say that, that it's at the discretion of the county commissioner, where you, you put a pipe in a driving model?
And the pipe, you know, in states, and there's steel pipe. I, I don't wanna hold them to steel pipe. I, I'd like for them to be able to use plastic pipe, if, you know, something that won't crush.
Can we not make that sheer discretion also?
That's kinda what I meant by the discretion, you know? Instead of just using a thread or tin horn, if they do that, I want the ends covered with steel pipe, if they sleeve over it, where they won't run the ends over and smash the ends, that's why we was concerned.
But if we, if we leave all that at the discretion of the commissioner, then you can go out and look at it and say, "This is what I want done."
That's, that's kinda what I...
Size and everything.
'Cause they don't have to do that for us now, I think, they put them where... We, we don't have no regulations over that, over the grand, whether they put a pipe in or not. They can just, they can come off that road anywhere they want.
Does it also need to say they agreed upon location?
It says in there.
Does it?
I like all the wordage except that.
What about the screening, you know, I'm just read that.
That's, that's on a blacktop road, uh, or a paved road, when they're coming off, so they don't track a bunch of mud and slop and stuff out there.
But they may not be able to come up with screenings, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, uh, comparable, just, just...
Yeah, I mean, that's a...
That's, that's more of that discretion.
It's a drain.
Yeah, discretion, you know? We could just say inch and a half, or uh, you know, eight bar five eighths millimeters or stuff, or whatever they got, you know? I mean, really, that's not a problem, 'cause they rock all their stuff.
Right, I mean...
Yeah, but if we're gonna do this, then we may have other drives that go in that aren't locked down. It's just gonna cover all of us, conventional.
Commercial interests, yeah.
How about?
It's not just...
How about a, it, it says, uh, "To cap the surface of the entrance with screenings at least two inches thick, extending twenty-five feet from it." How about we just hook with rock?
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of being specific, like the screens. That's an easy fix, and...
Might change the thickness of it. Two inches of rock, not a bunch.
That one I got on my head.
Okay, but you're, I'm missing the part about the pipes, I haven't found that. Here's what it says, "Every point of ingress or regress onto the county right-of-way, the construction of which requires a right-of-way entrance permit shall utilize a steel culvert at least twenty-four inches in diameter, running parallel to the road under said point of ingress or regress."
There's gonna be some...
How do you want, yeah, I know, but how do we, how, we, we need to generalize that. I mean, we, we've all agreed, we can't say twenty-four inch, 'cause some of them may not take a pipe at all, and, and we, we wanna handle each situation as, as needed, is what I'm trying to get at.
At the discretion of the commissioner? The commissioner?
Shall.
Size, length?
Okay.
To handle all drainage issues.
"At every point of ingress or regress onto the county right-of-way, the construction of which requires right-of-way entrance permit shall..." "Shall meet the commissioner's requirements for that entrance."
Right.
Require commissioners' approval and...
Authorization.
And approval of...
With everything.
Of entrance. Okay. "Every point of ingress or regress onto county right-of-way, the construction of which requires a right-of-way entrance permit shall require commissioners' approval of ingress or regress standard."
That's right. Now, this, we're gonna present this as a resolution, correct?
We're just gonna accept this permit, the...
Right.
The...
For, yeah. We need to make, what does it say on the open statement?
"Before the county commissioner of Woods County, Oklahoma, application to work within Woods County Highway System right-of-way entrance."
Okay, now, are we in it, is that commercial property, or are we in right-of-way?
It's in here, about, for residential and ag is, is exempt from it.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
There, there is a, here's what it says, "Residential and agriculture access drives to be constructed shall not be assessed a permit fee, even though permits must be secured."
Okay. So, that kinda covers it all, now?
Yeah.
And it does.
Just lets us know that they're doing it, which is nothing more than standard.
They do anything, yeah.
I mean, you wanna look at these changes, John, or, I mean, I read them to you, that, that's all. You can think of what we need in there?
I, I need, aye.
All right. Okay, I'll make a motion we approve this permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, this will straighten it completely.
They're still getting their fifty?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, there's some...
Yes.
Okay. Number seventeen, discussion possible action regarding surplus and cap quote approved in the last... No, 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 ODOT form, three twenty-four A.
I added another. Oh, you got that. It's been following, good though, until now.
Oh.
Sorry.
I guess, so.
Y'all made in this change.
Sixteen, she's fifty years.
Sorry. Had five till ten, I had to add something.
Number seventeen, discussion possible action regarding the ODOT form three twenty-four A claim form in the amount nineteen hundred dollars assessed to Pinnacle Construction Management Group Incorporated, project, project, Green Leaf Creek, J P three one seven seven six oh four, project manager acquisition, a hundred percent parcel, one-half, and acquisition offer made, fifty percent parcel, one-half.
You signed or it's written?
That is for, you print all the green leaf.
Get them out there and build it.
Finally, got all the people out and...
Okay, finally got all the right-of-way.
I'll make a motion we approve that. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna need here with that, with all the... That would've been nice, I think, at least to quit.
It was this, you have talked to that guy about how, that's...
Okay, number 18, discussion possible action to rescind the Bobcat quote approved in the last meeting, approve the state contract quote to purchase of a Bobcat compact track load, re-grant 2020 for wildfire mitigation equipment for Woods County Conservation District. So...
They just need to take out the part that had the tradium.
Okay, so that's all that amounts to.
Or lead it to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was $11,000 difference that they used for matching funds, so, anyway, I'll make the motion when we approve this, it's just a...
Okay.
It's a correction of...
Yeah.
Of figures, is what it amounts to for the re-grant purposes.
Or motion to rescind or...
To approve the new one.
To rescind and approve, uh-huh.
I guess we'll receive the old one and approve the new one, current.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, aye.
Yep. Is that what kind of blood in Bobcat?
Yeah. Okay, number 19, discussion possible action regarding the subpoena Deuses Touson for records from the offices of Janey, Johnigan, Robertson, PC. Okay, this is pertaining to a suit filed against the Redgates and Board of County Commissioners and the Treasurer of Major County, and all it was asking for is records that were, if we had mined or removed yet from Legals in Major County from 2005 through date, and for all our records, and we really have no records, we definitely didn't mine any, and as far as we did find out, we didn't remove any from that location, didn't haul any away. Here is what's sent to us.
What is this word? Deuses, teacher, tackle?
I have no clue.
Latin?
Probably it is. And this is the response for all those questions that, on how I respond.
It's a subpoena for production of evidence. It's a subpoena for production of evidence?
Is what that means.
Why can't I say?
I know.
Now, read that, that's what we're gonna vote on, see if you're okay with how I respond.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Well...
I'm good with that, I was here. I spread a bunch of that rock though, but it wasn't killing.
I'm good.
Okay, is that a motion and a second? Okay, motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any new business?
That's a little odd, you got any, see? No, I don't have any, I don't have any, do.
Okay, here we are, John, approval, disapproval, blanket perch sort.
I like that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, number 22, what we're looking for, motion to adjourn.